The only other one we are waiting on is just Sarah then?
Yeah, I think Sarah's the only.
So we can, since Joy is out, I guess, let's just give her one more, give her one more minute, then I think we kick off since we're already at six o'clock, six oh two here.
Hello?
Hi, Michael. We can hear you.
Hi, guys.
Howdy.
Hello.
All right, well, I think we should.
Aaron, I'm seeing some people.
I think we should kick it off here and if Sarah joins us, we'll, we'll call her, you know, attention to the meeting as, as we are, Joy is out tonight. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. The, this Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, first meeting of the year, Market City Planning Commission. We'll start with roll call. I'll call your name and if you could just respond here, that'd be super. Commissioner Andres.
President.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Primo.
Sure.
And Michael Larson here. We got Joy Cardillo out, excuse, and we may be still waiting for Sarah Middlefield. If everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda, largely just a work session here tonight, if I could, if there are any changes to the agenda, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Andres, we have a second.
Our second.
Second by Commissioner Dunn. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Agenda passes. Next, next up is minutes from, I guess, a month ago already, twelve fifteen, our last, our last official meeting. Did anybody have any comments, have a chance to read through them or any comments and changes that may need to be made?
I had a question more than anything, but there's, maybe, maybe I don't speak as clearly as I think, but I was looking through and it, it seems like a lot of the comments are abbreviated more than usual. And again, that might just be my recollection of, of things. I didn't see anything that wasn't accurate, but it, it seems like several commissioners' comments were sort of abbreviated and I don't know if that's the norm or not.
Noted in Dave.
They're definitely abbreviated. You know, work session, we don't have to, technically by Robert's rules, none, none of these government meetings have to be verbatim. You have to include motions and any other kind of official actions, but Planning Commission during cases, we're very detailed because there's a lot at stake in a lot of these cases. And so we want to get things nailed down and have no kind of doubt about what was said. But with work sessions, that's a different story and you may recall, you know, late in the year, we had some work sessions where we had left a page for the whole meeting. And I imagine that's what's going to come out of this one because we're between transcriptionists right now, our company that we've been contracting with for four years for this. The transcriptionist gave her notice of intent to, you know, find other employment or retire before this meeting between our December meetings. And so I transcribed all of the stuff that's in these meetings here or in these minutes. And I can tell you, it takes a long time when you don't, you can't type as fast as people talk. And I'm nowhere in that ballpark. So, but I was going to say regardless of you mentioning that, that we got a compliment from one of the city commissioners about this meeting, who read the minutes and said that was a really good discussion that the planning commission had, and I don't often get direct emails from city commissioners. And so that's kind of remarkable.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave anything. I, this meeting was actually pretty important, I think, for a work session. And I did want to capture everything that was said that I thought was meaningful and not leave anything out that I felt was meaningful. So, but it's definitely not verbatim.
No, I, I appreciate the, the clarification. And I, like I said, when I looked at it, I thought it was, I thought it was accurate. It, like I said, just seemed abbreviated compared to the way they usually are. Now that you explain that, it makes total sense to me.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Dave, I just emailed, Sarah just emailed, I just emailed the link to her, so I don't know if she's waiting.
Oh, yeah, she's waiting.
Keep an eye out for.
Letter and she's coming in now. Hello.
Sarah, we've, we've, we've gotten underway and so I guess let, you know, notes reflect that Commissioner Middlefield has joined us. And we're, we're just looking at the, the approval of the minutes. Sarah, did you have any comments to the minutes? If not, we will go ahead and.
Nope, they look good to me.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and approve those by consent on that. Next on the agenda, you know, I, we don't have any cases in front of us, you know, here. So I don't think the conflict of interest is, you know, necessary at this, this point in time. We have no public hearing hearings. Do we have any, do we have any citizens wishing to address the Commission on Agenda Items, Dave? Anybody else in that, in the waiting room?
No.
All right, moving on, we have no, we have no old business. We have no new business. We do not have any citizens waiting to address the Commission on Non-Agenda Items. So I guess we'll move on to correspondence reports, minutes of other boards and committees. I don't know that we have any correspondence to share, Dave.
No, and actually, I, I guess I I could have, I think I could have put one of our reports in there from our department, but I forgot to be honest. So that's.
We'll let it slide.
Have anything else, really.
All right. That moves us on to, to our, our one agenda item that we have. We had today have, we have a work session on the city strategic plan submission. So I think I'll just, I'll hand it over to you, Dave, to help walk us through this and kind of where you'd like the discussion to, to lead.
Okay, so thanks, Michael. The city commission, when the charter, city charter was updated around twenty fifteen, they adopted this new process to do a, is it every two years, submission of initiatives for possible implementation from city plans and the other committee actions and depart from departments. And there's a limit on three for each committee. And I, I don't know that that's been the case every year, every time, but this year it was a, we were asked to submit three issues. And you recall, we, we started this back in, God, almost a year ago now. Because the process was gonna, it's supposed to kind of jive with the city budget process so that when the commissioners are considering budgeting for the next year, they have these issues in front of them that they've adopted and they kind of know what things they want to try to budget for. So March of last year, we had a meeting on this. And I don't recall what the deadline was, but it was somewhere like this was supposed to conclude in May. The budget gets adopted through the course of the summer and, you know, official adoption in September. But the, the budget process actually starts in the spring or it's starting pretty soon in a month or so internally. But so the issues that were agreed upon in March are the same ones that I prepared and sent to you by email yesterday. And those are winter maintenance and programming is one of the issues. Public transportation. This is another one. And then the third one was the North Lake Shore Boulevard corridor study. All of these issues have been submitted before. I've revised this, the issue sheets to reflect that these would be new submissions or resubmissions. And so this is for your discussion. I tried to capture the, what I thought with the, the winter planning one, if we're going to start with that. The two thousand four community master plan was, one of the major themes of that plan was to improve our winter standing, our, our winter mobility and access and programming and make Marquette. I mean, this was the tagline of the whole plan was Marquette is a premier walkable winter city. And as I, we've turned this in before, you know, stated in this thing that that hasn't happened. That, that still is, it's a aspirational kind of a statement, but we've really not accomplished that. And so just trying to keep that in front of the, the decision makers. And as I've written this, the recommendation here is basically to do what they've done with the housing, affordable housing issue and appoint an ad hoc committee to look at the shortcomings in our winter maintenance and try to, you know, identify improvements that can be made. And also look at programming. And that, that's one of the things that the down DDA has found in their planning efforts is they've heard a lot from downtown businesses that say they want to see more happening in the winter downtown and they want the city and the DDA to be more involved with helping to program winter activities. So from there, you guys can take this, I'll try to, do you want me to share my screen to bring issues up?
Yeah.
So I'm going to have to find that one. Oh, I don't know if I can because we have multiple, we have multiple meetings going on at the same time here using the same account. So I don't know if I can do that.
Well, while you're looking at that, I guess, you know, one of the first questions I have is, you know, I, I read, I read through, I read through each of, each of these and I guess, you know, premier walkable winter city. You know, I know we don't, I mean, I don't necessarily know what the criteria upon which to judge that would be based. I mean, the, the city does have, you know, winter, winter plow routes and then also, you know, the routes for around the, you know, the city bike path or the multi-use path that are, that are definitely taken care of, providing for, you know, access to, access to, you know, Lake Superior and so on and so forth. So I guess, I guess question, you know, what, what do we see as premier walkable city kind of mean, I guess?
I would say accessible for all. Elderly, disabled, people that like hiking, people that don't like hiking, everyone.
Um, and so I guess my follow-up question to that is how can it, what are the criteria that need to improve to make that, you know, that are beyond, like the city plowing, like sidewalk plowing efforts and things like that. And those are the criteria that I don't necessarily know.
Take a look at the memo that was sent, there was talk of having the Honors Society of NMU and other entities here up with residents in the community to help plow and help brush off snow so that the city could be more accessible for those individuals. Um, uh, yeah. Um, and and I think, I know we live in a climate that is, is not conducive to walkable, accessible, particularly in the winter when it snows quite a bit. This year is a mild winter, obviously, but overall it does snow quite a bit. And I, I would say, I wouldn't expect the roads to be, roads or sidewalks to be, you know, fully cleared all the time, but just to make it more of the possibility that individuals could, all individuals could access it, not just those that aren't physically challenged in some way or of capable, not capable of full, fully ambulating their own limbs.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yeah, I, I read about that in the Snow Angel Program and I think that's a wonderful thing, a wonderful idea. And I don't know, I, I came up with this idea, I, I don't know if it's doable or not. You know, you have adopt a highways, you have adopt a hydrant programs that people go and shovel out the hydrants for fire safety. What about a adopt a sidewalk? Maybe, you know, if citizens are interested, they could adopt one city block, one side of the street. And, you know, get recognized for clearing that sidewalk with their snow blower or ATV with the plow or if they shovel it. That's a way that could ease up, you know, the maintenance crews for the city to do it. And yet, you know, people are getting recognized to do it and volunteer their time to clean the sidewalks. I mean, I, just idea.
Commissioner Andres.
I know there are multiple, eight, multiple groups that need certain volunteer hours for their, their different projects and stuff, their honors society and stuff like that. So I'm sure we could connect with those individuals to see if they would take that volunteerism as credit for some of their projects, I don't know.
Commissioner Middlefield.
Yeah, the Northern has the SLP, this, the Superior Leadership Fellowship. There's a leadership group that they have to do community service hours would be a perfect fit for that. I, and I liked Eric's idea too, but I, I had a question, I guess, about just like bigger picture question about the strategic planning process and decision-making authority. So Dave, can you clarify, so we can, we're saying winter cities, transportation and the Lake Shore Boulevard study. Those are like the three things we get to say should be emphasized in the strategic plan. And then the city commission then gets to kind of take those and run with them if they want. Or I guess I'm kind of confused about the bigger like process of what we're doing. Like we're just trying to make recommendations about these three things. Are we getting into the weeds about what each of those three things should look like? Or can you give us a little bit more context of what we need to accomplish tonight, I guess?
Yeah, you're definitely, the conversation was getting into the weeds, but you do need to kind of, you're, you described the process correctly. You're submitting three items. And there's, they're considering items from all of the different boards and committees from the city. And departments can also submit items. So they have a lot of these issues to consider and then they're going to fund some of them. They're not going to fund all of them. They might not fund any of these that you submit. It's, there's no, there's, there's no real detailed plan behind this strategic planning initiative as far as, you know, they don't put a budget cap on how much they designate to accomplish strategic initiatives. It's sort of up to the commission to decide how to proceed with these things and weigh, you know, whatever process they want to use to decide how they're going to prioritize these issues. We have heard them talk about and with when Joy did the presentation to them on December twenty-first, we heard a lot of positive feedback from that presentation. You know, they, I don't know, we haven't had a chance to discuss this. I don't know if you guys had a chance to watch that video from the meeting or tuned into it. But I was really pleased at the reception that the, from the commissioners. City commissioners were very happy about a lot of the stuff they heard, the, the planning commission being proactive anyway was good for them. And the transportation issue in particular was one. I, I don't know if they'll be, you know, that's one where there's not necessarily any funding that would need to be, none of these issues are anything that they would necessarily have to fund this year to even, to get started. There, you know, there's components of all of these things that could be started this year without spending a dime. And hopefully all of them will get started in some way or another at the city commission level. And that's kind of where I think these suggestions on how to get started. I think that's kind of built into this is the good part of it is they don't have to spend anything. If they establish an ad hoc committee for the winter cities or winter maintenance and programming, that doesn't cost anything, that doesn't, doesn't cost anything to start work sessions on the public transit or the Lake Shore Boulevard part of it. We need to start somewhere and agree on how to proceed with it. We can't, the planning commission can't do any of these things on its own. Really need the city commission to, you know, designate at least a a delegation of commissioners to, to attend a meeting to get this kind of underway.
Commissioner Dunn.
Dave, could you give us a little background as to what's happened in the past? You know, if this was on the two thousand four master plan, I'm sure that it's been presented to the city commission before. And, and I guess I'm kind of wondering, what are the biggest hurdles and what are the biggest challenges? Where do, where do the, the previous attempts die?
Yeah, so with this issue and specifically the winter cities thing, in the ten years that I've worked here, the only real focused attention to this issue has been a, we did convene something, Dennis Stackwitz and I recommended holding the Snow Summit. And it's mentioned in this item. But it, it didn't, it didn't materialize anywhere, anything like we hoped it would. You know, we really wanted to have something where we could bring together the city DPW. I mean, we've got this huge fleet of plows and maintain city streets. NMU does a lot of street maintenance on its campus, does a lot of transportation. This, the public school system maps. We had people from those agencies come, but the, the city commission basically took over the meeting and made it a city commission meeting at Lakeview Arena where they chose to talk to a couple of different people. And it seemed like there was a predetermined, you know, notion of how this was going to transpire and what the outcome was going to be. And unfortunately, so there wasn't really a free exchange of ideas. And much at all kind of, you know, creation of alternative, you know, thoughts about alternatives that might be viable or how, you know, what kind of programs might be possible. It was basically an analysis of how much money we're spending now and how much it would cost to get to another level. And the outcome of that was basically to get to the next, to get to another level where we really could have a walkable city is well beyond what we can afford to do.
So that, that kind of leads me into my second question, which was, is there a way that, that the planning commission could gather, I, I'm thinking about a survey in, in the, in the winter is coming video. I don't know if it was Ayla or one of the other presenters had talked about how they had a lot of community involvement based on surveys that they sent out or questionnaires that they sent out. And I'm wondering if, if that's something that, that the planning commission can do prior to presenting something to the city commission so that the, you know, it, the idea can go to the city commission. But along with that idea, you've got here, look, this is what, this is what your citizens are saying and this is what your citizens are asking for. And, and put some, you know, some weight behind it.
Yeah, I don't know that we can do much more than something like what we've got here because that's what they want. They want a very brief summary version of what you're recommending.
I think, I think, you know, the ad hoc, you know, the ad hoc committee, I mean, I think that's, that could help, you know, put together some of these issues. And, you know, I guess, you know, we were starting to get into the weeds there a little bit, probably my, my fault for driving down those, that pathway. But the ad hoc committee seems like a reasonable, a reasonable, well, you know, way to move forward. And, you know, to Commissioner Dunn's point there, you know, there's the possibility that, I mean, I, I don't know how much we can drive the request to put an ad hoc committee together, you know, for this, you know, to help discuss that. And the one piece that I had that, you know, follow up with this was the, one of the recommendations from the housing, the ad hoc housing committee was the winter parking ban. Re- revisit that. And I know that's, you know, a little bit on the parking, on the parking side of things. But I don't know if that would have a place in, in discussion here as well. You know, or revisiting some of the, the winter parking scenarios that may be out there. Why, I don't think we necessarily have to tie it into that, but just kind of throwing it out there. Commissioner Middlefield.
I think Aaron had his hand up before I did, I can wait.
Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Andres.
Um, yes, I, I would agree with all these statements that are in front of us. However, if we don't have.
Does anybody else have?
Any way to, or any plan to, our thoughts or plans to initiate any of these things? We're basically submitting a piece of paper to submit a piece of paper. And while that's all well and good, I would rather have ideas to present to them rather than just, these are our, this is what we think we ought to do. Now you take it and run with it, right? I'm a firm believer and if we give somebody options, they'll pick the best option and run with that. So.
Commissioner Middlefield.
That actually kind of dovetails well with what I wanted to say, which was, are we sure these are our greatest hits? You know what I mean? Like, do we think these three things are the most important thing? And I don't want to reinvent the wheel, Dave. I know we've been talking about this, we recommended this before, but, you know, I'm wondering, is there a reason? Someone said there, you know, what are the reasons these things didn't fly before? And maybe there's more pressing things that we should be focused on. So I'm, I think that might warrant conversation amongst us now. Maybe there's more pressing things that we should be focused on, so I'm, I think that might warrant conversation amongst us now. Are there other things that are captured in these and, I don't know, can we even go there, are we all committed to these are the three. Important things that we, the planning commission, think are the most. Important to be addressing in our next strategic plan.
It is in our master plan to. Be a more accessible, walkable city, and this is one of the ways we go about doing that, so yeah. I think especially the, the transportation and the. Uh, making things more walkable would be along with, going right along with the master plan.
Yeah, I agree, I, I mean, I'm always about, all, it's like, uh, there's so many things that I see, like. I think the city should be focusing on, and these are all great, so I mean, if this is what we all think is the three most important, I'm. I'm happy to go with these three, but, um, we did have a conversation one of our last meetings. About, um, you know, kind of looking forward, and I think Eric was talking about. The, you know, the governor has this plan to be carbon neutral by twenty fifty, and Eric was like, well, why don't we do twenty thirty? You know, I would, I would love to throw something out there, I know a lot of communities have already gotten together, the county has a climate adaptation plan. I know, um, Michael and probably some of you have read the county's version of something like that, but as far as I know, the city doesn't really have a. Strategic plan toward carbon neutrality, um, which would, like, in some ways would be a nice framework to talk about transportation. Winter cities, you know, what is our winter going to look like? Um, and the Lake Shore Boulevard, you know, is a, is a example of, you know, climate resilient infrastructure, and I don't know. I don't want to open up another can of worms, but I'm just wondering, are we committed to these three things as is? Or is there something else that maybe we want to consider? Or could include in maybe one of these things that is also related to our community master plan in many different places.
Commissioner Brooks.
Well, the whole, yeah, I, I agree with Sarah, I mean. You know, especially if the whole carbon neutrality. I mean, then all of these things come into play with that. So. I don't know, is that one thing we want to address more than the Lake Shore Boulevard or. Uh, walkable or the transportation, because i- if. I think it's, I think it'd be brilliant, I think it'd be a good thing for the city, it's good for our children, grandchildren. Yeah, I think it. I, I don't see why we wouldn't explore that more. I think because everything that the city does then will. Have to kind of focus on that goal of carbon neutrality. Right? Or am I just off base?
If the city commission adopts recommendations to do something about it.
Right.
So I guess, follow up question to that and Dave, I don't know if you know better, uh, what others are, I, I know at least some on the city commission. Uh, have discussed. Climate and solar and so on and so forth, uh, is there, has there been any discussions around this elsewhere in the city? That there'll be a more. You know, formal, you know, look at, you know, the twenty fifty recommendations.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, but it sounded like some of the city commissioners are, are evaluating that for themselves.
So, I, I mean, so I think, you know, these, I personally, I think these three items, you know, are, are certainly. All, all, they're, they're important, uh, they're important issues that, you know, haven't moved a whole lot. Uh, you know, I certainly think, you know, Lake Shore Boulevard has been something that has been, you know, on our, on our mind. And also, you know, residents, you know, minds, you know, here, you know, in the city and how to make that work for everybody. But, you know, every, the, the. Incorporating. Incorporating, you know, climate or the governor's goals, uh, you know, early on, I think is something, a, a recommendation that. Could certainly either be worked into all these or, you know, worked as a separate, as a secret, separate recommendation. Now, I know you're only allowed to have three, but, uh, you know, are we, can we submit four, can we submit like a fourth? You know, about the creation, creation of an ad hoc. Uh, ad hoc committee to explore. You know, coordination with the governor's, you know, twenty fifty plan.
You have to have three issues. You have to have three issues that have been explored in the master plan. And I don't really know that the climate change thing has really been, has been expounded on at all in the, in the master plan. If you have a suggestion for rewriting this, one of these items, uh, instead of one of these to. Something along those lines, then that's what you need to do.
Commissioner Mittelfeld.
Well, could we just reframe it and, like, take transportation as, like, a key aspect of that. Climate neutrality plan and, um, maybe the winter cities is its own thing. You know, as is, and then this plant, something about climate neutrality that focuses on transportation and infrastructure. And then, you know, the key example of like, you know, climate resilient infrastructure is Lake Shore Boulevard, you know what I mean? So we're making this recommendation that sort of has. These critical aspects of it and spotted in her, am I making it too complicated? Kind of like what Eric was saying, I think they are inherent into what that plan would look like. Um, and you're right, Dave, I was rereading the goals of the community master plan, and it doesn't necessarily talk about. The governor's goal for carbon neutrality, doesn't talk about carbon neutrality, because that wasn't the language that they were using when that plan was written. But there is a lot in there about transportation, about energy efficiency, all these other aspects that collectively would be. What would be required to get carbon neutrality or whatever, so. I don't know, I'm just kind of, I'm trying to, I'm thinking out loud, and I'm sorry if I'm not totally coherent right now, I've been zooming all day since like seven o'clock this morning, but. You know what I mean, like, I wonder if there's a way to just reframe what you have here. Into a larger recommendation about this plan that would address transportation with an ad hoc committee. Or no, the, or the winter cities have the ad hoc committee, I guess, but you know what I mean, like, I wonder if there's a way to just kind of reframe it a little bit.
Well, you know, the. Joy's presentation to the city commission made pretty clear that the planning commission was very concerned about the, the. Carbon. Carbon footprint of the city and several city commissioners commented on it. One of them said that they were what, thinking of something along the same lines and. I gotta say, I think that. That's an issue that they are already starting to wrestle with. And I don't know that it's gonna particularly help to make that a one of your issues here. And the. Thing about the transit service, I mean, you can say something in there about it being, you know, uh. Part of, uh, an effort to reduce carbon footprint in the city. But that's not the goal of it. There's a whole other goal that's much more. Much more relevant to why we need transit in Marquette. As soon as we can get it. And I'm, I'm coming, kind of coming at that from the perspective, and I've had this conversation with, like, Brad Newman about the bike, bikeability too, and. You know, I was a transportation planner before I came here and I, I worked on. In a metro area that had a lot of pollution and had a lot of funding for reducing. Reducing single occupant vehicle trips and. Transit in Marquette and biking in Marquette isn't gonna be a fraction of a drop in the bucket. To what we need to do. On, on that carbon neutrality thing, it, it's. It's nice to, to go there, and it, it'll be good to go there, good to make that happen and. Get people to start thinking and using different types of. Transportation that isn't single occupant vehicle especially, but. I don't really think tying it to carbon neutrality is. I, if you, if you can write up something that you want to include in there, I think it's great, but it's not gonna. Really be part of that overarching climate reduction, carbon greenhouse gas reduction strategy. That's gonna have an impact, the city really needs to come up with some, they've, they already spent, you know, a, a lot of money. On starting down that road with the Johnson Controls Project for all the city facilities. That's, um. Supposedly gonna, you know, reduce the city's electricity use significantly over the next twenty years. That's the kind of thing where, you know, spending millions of dollars to make that kind of. Difference, it is starting to happen, um, and that, that's the kind of thing that is gonna make a difference, like. Being more progressive about the kind of vehicles that the city buys and that kind of thing and, you know.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
This transit thing has been something I've been working on for a long time, and it's really frustrating to be still where we are with this. And. I'm just hoping by God we finally can start talking, start moving on the city commission level. To, to, to make this happen. Just for the sake of what we're trying to make happen, just to get a transit system up and running. Uh, or, uh, in, inner city line of our own, because none of the transit routes that run through Marquette. Are specific to Marquette, they're all tangential, Marquette is a tangent on those lines, they all go out into the rural areas. They're all primarily rural transit service. In and out of Marquette. So just getting a line in the city that has a short headway is gonna be a major accomplishment.
Eric, Karen.
I would agree with everything that's been said, these look good to me, if Sarah would like to revise them. And add something in, more power to you, however, if these are what we have, I say we go with them and. The city does what the city wants to do.
So I, the reason I asked about, you know, other, I know other commissioners are thinking about the twenty, you know, the twenty fifty, uh, governor initiative. Governor's initiative, uh, for carbon neutrality, you know, is because, you know, the, the, the hope. The hope would be that, um. Goals at that level, go, goals taken, you know, goals taken at the city, uh, you know. Level, level would help translate into essentially considering. You know, carbon goals, energy goals, up, you know, within every, within every, every decision. And so I think, you know, I think, you know, another, you know, side option, another side option would be that, you know, if the, if we are. If this, if this is something that, you know, we want to continue down. We, we want to encourage, I mean, we can look at these, you know, strategic planning process initiatives, uh, and we couldn't. Uh, we could in theory draft just a letter, you know, a kind of a follow up letter to the commission that, you know, we hope that the commission takes something like that on. It's like, you know, uh, along those lines, I think that might be, that might be fair, if that's something that the planning commission feels strongly about. Uh, and helping, helping go down, you know, that, that line. Um, you know, I know a lot of these have been on the, on the agenda, you know, in the past, and certainly they have some. Uh, you know, benefits to carbon neutrality and, and. Uh, and climate and the environment, um, but, uh, you know. In the original concept anyway, that, that was a, a kind of a, a secondary, secondary benefit to, you know, the, the, the. Primary, you know, initiatives of, you know, helping to get, move folks around, around the city where they haven't been able to and so on and so forth. So I think, I think we can certainly encourage the, the city commission, and I know that there has been discussion, at least at, at that level of, you know, what that, what that means. And setting goals, you know, I've had conversations with some of the commissioners as well, about the importance of setting goals, you know, for, you know, if they're gonna actually move. Move forward, you know, with, you know, any, uh, any subs- uh, substantial, you know, movement towards, you know, setting themselves up for. You know, in a similar vein that somebody like, you know, uh, Traverse City, I know we don't like to compare to Traverse City, is, but with their. Their climate goals or their goals that they're, even their, uh, municipal utility has set forth, uh, you know, certainly has to be taken, taken place at that. At that particular level, and maybe not necessarily in the strategic planning process if we are tied. If, if we are tied to, uh, you know, what has been stated in the master plan. But I do think we can certainly make it, make it known that we, we are supportive of, of, uh. You know, the twenty fifty, uh, initiative. Uh, Commissioner Dunn.
I, I, I think I may be echoing what, what you just said, but. My brain's processing it a little bit differently, but so sorry if this is. Kind of a duplicate statement, but I would really like to, to put some sort of statement in there. That, you know, these could be the three issues, but have a little, have a little note that, that we feel that, that. Going after the governor's carbon goals, um, is one of our top priorities, if not the top priority. And however we can address that, we, we wanna, we wanna do that. It, I'm gonna defer to Dave on, on whether, you know, changing this around or tying it to carbon neutrality would slow these down, because. I, I think ultimately, at least two of these three are, are moving us in the right direction, so the focus should be on. What's gonna get it done, um, and, uh, you know, I'm all in favor of that, at the same time. You know, planning to, to be a. Productive, um, happy winter city, um, is going to be. Relatively irrelevant if we don't get carbon emissions under control in the next ten to fifteen years. Uh, wanting to be a winter city won't make a damn bit of difference at that point. Um, so. Yeah, I would, I, I would love to somehow communicate to the city commission that along with these. Uh, three specific items, we, we do feel very strongly about, you know, making sure that we. Do our part and do whatever we can to, to try and achieve the carbon neutrality.
So, I mean, Dave, I think when you're, you were planning on turning, that, like, we were, you're planning on essentially us. Saying, approving this and getting this kind of into the, you know, kind of into that, into that process. Next week, I, I assume this was the meeting to kind of discuss this and so you could kind of finalize and, and submit, submit the. The three, three options, is that correct?
Yeah, and, you know, I do wish there was more time for us to work on this, but I'm just, I'm given the, you know. The task to get this back, um, they want these in by the end of the month. And I, you know, maybe we have more time, I, I don't know how some of these committees are gonna be able to make that timeline. Given that this was just kind of shoveled back out the door last week, you know. So, yeah, maybe we have, maybe we'll have more time, but my understanding is, you know, we, this is because we're not having another meeting this month. Uh, we won't necessarily have another opportunity to discuss these, but. Yeah, and my, my kind of view on this is that if one of these gets actually funded, it would be great. If one out of the three got funded, it would be good, because, I mean, the realistic situation is the city is. It not in. You know, a great financial posture, because the city is not. You know, we're dealing with COVID, we've got. Less revenue, you know, than normal, and, and, you know, the normal situation isn't great. The normal situation is we are getting done, uh, about twenty. between maybe 15 to 20% of our annual road maintenance goal. It, that's a normal year. So if if you consider that, you know, on a good year, we should be, you know, our goal is to be accomplishing 10% of our road maintenance needs every year, and we're really only accomplishing, you know, more like three, two or 3% to maintain our road system. I mean, we're, that's not a good scenario for for the long run, but that's, that's where we're at in the last several years. Just because the state cut off a lot of our pass through funding after the great, you know, debacle in the housing industry in 2008 or 2009. The state basically went into a tailspin, economic tailspin, and cities ended up getting a lot less pass through money from state grants. And so we've, we've been struggling, then we lost our biggest taxpayer in the city. When the Prescott Hill Power Plant shut down, so, you know, it, and that's why, you know, if we can get things started that don't require a lot of funding right now, that's great. And planning for the the carbon, to to meet the carbon neutrality goals of the governor's plan isn't necessarily going to cost the city a lot of money, but I, my point is, I, I don't think that's so much in the wheelhouse of the planning commission right now as it is with the city commission. And this, the joy, bringing that to the issue up to the city commission just last month, it did have an impact and, you know, there were comments from city commissioners. There was a comment afterwards from the city manager about it. And so it it was heard loud and clear that the planning commission is concerned with that and wants the city commission to move forward on something in that regard, you know. And these issues are more in your wheelhouse. These are right in your wheelhouse coming out of the master plan.
Commissioner Melafeld.
Um, yeah, just to, I hear you on the financial issues that the city is experiencing. But I I saw the report that was sent to the city manager from Johnson Controls, from the energy efficiency measures that they put in. I don't know if you saw it, Dave, but the city saved $2.9 million. So I think people think, you know, carbon neutrality, it's going to kill the economy. No, it can be, there's ways to make money. $2.9 million the city saved in 2020 from energy efficiency. And so I think, I don't, you know, I, all of these things are important. You know, I would support all three of these things. You know, I definitely think that rethinking how we build and our buildings and heat our buildings and power our buildings and, you know, run transportation systems, not just public transportation, but EVs and create stations for that. You know, I mean, there's so many opportunities for economic prosperity, you know. So I, that's why, I don't know. And yeah, so I I guess, short story is, I'm happy with this idea of just putting these three forward, but making it clear that we have these other big picture. These are all big picture, but another kind of big picture goal for carbon neutrality that I really think could be a moneymaker for the city. I mean, we've already seen evidence of what the money we can save with that Johnson Controls project was just astounding. I was blown away when I saw that number, $2.9 million in one year. So just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, Sarah, I agree with you 100%. I think that's brilliant. I think we do need to address a letter to the city that, you know, there are a lot of good options and a lot of good things that come about the carbon neutrality. And that, you know, we are concerned of it and would like the city commission to look into it further.
And I I think I I I think that, I think that's, I think, looking forward like at, you know, these pieces that are here in front of us, because I I do think that there's some, there's certainly benefits, you know, to these. And but then having, you know, some sort of other conversation with the city, whether that be, you know, a letter to the city commission. So, you know, you know, that kind of gets, you know, official, you know, from us to them to say, hey, this, these are things that we are considerate and that, you know, this needs to be kind of baked into all decision making processes, you know, not just, you know, our three items, you know, and whatnot, but across the city, you know, could be, you know, one, one way to, one way to do that with Joy's presentation. They already know that this is something that we're, we're thinking about. But, you know, not, but it's going to have to be action that comes from, it's going to have to be action that comes from them. And so I I think that's something we could potentially do at a, at another meeting is, you know, help, you know, put together a letter or maybe we have volunteers that would be willing to draft, you know, initial letter that can be presented back to, you know, the planning commission and to determine whether or not, you know, that can just be sent on to the, on to city commission members, just as a, this is, this is how, this is how we think it, we hope this is something you'll take up in the next, in the next year, you know, aside from, you know, the strategic planning process. So if we are, so I I guess follow up, follow up that. So, I mean, we've got these, these three issues in in front of us. So, hey, well, let me take one step back. Is there any, is there any issue with essentially moving on like? Does anybody want to change and anything in particular that they want to change about the winter cities? Or if you want to add, you know, if we need to add a sentence about that, is somebody willing to take that on? Or is that something that, you know, we are comfortable, like, taking a look at the issues we have in front of us, judging them as they're kind of written and then having some other, you know, kind of separate discussion later about carbon neutrality? Does that make sense? Because I don't exactly know how to, you know, to add to these as they are, you know, as they are that don't, that, you know, would add it to them, especially if these are just kind of one, none of these may, may ever, you know, come, come, come forward. Eric, did you have it or Commissioner Brooks there?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you just wanted to add in there, if, you know, would it be possible to do a adopted sidewalk?
I, and I think, I think maybe that goes into the appoint an ad hoc committee to short the shortcomings and look at additional ideas like adopt a sidewalk or and or or climate change or whatever. I mean, I think there's, you know, little pieces that you could put in there that say, hey, these would be topics that the the ad hoc committee could potentially look at. Okay, because I think that's the real action here is an ad hoc committee that may identify what a, what a snow angel program might look like, what's, would add with a adopted sidewalk program might be. But I did have one more comment mostly on this, and that was to Dave, wasn't necessarily a comment. Other communities, and maybe we kind of have this too, but other communities and, you know, like you say, in Green Bay, for example, where I, where I have family, they happen to live on a corner a lot, but they have, but they'll get a, they'll get a notice if they don't, you know, shovel their sidewalks, you know, and potentially get a fine if they don't shovel their sidewalks in front of their, in front of their homes. I don't necessarily want to have to take, you know, that sort of, that sort of, you know, movement. But I mean, there's a possibility that, you know, you're in charge of the, your, the, the entire sidewalk in front of your property as some communities do, and, you know, there will be notices and whatnot sent out if you're not clearing your sidewalk. I don't know if we have something like that or if that's been considered, or maybe that's something that the ad hoc committee can look at or or something along those lines.
And that's, that's something we, you're going deep into stuff there that probably don't have nearly enough time to talk about.
Oh, and I don't, I don't necessarily want to talk, I I just didn't know if there was, there was, there's other policy processes that the ad hoc committee could potentially look at, you know, as well.
Yeah, that is definitely something for that committee and for a discussion with the commission and the next city manager. That get, yeah. I'd be glad to talk about it outside the meeting with you sometime, too, that particular part of the.
I bet it's difficult.
There's a lot of things a committee could, you know, you know, find, I'm sure, with some study here, that'd be good. The one reason I mentioned this, Snow Angels programs, because I did have a chance to meet with with NMU staff member and and the department head that would be involved with implementing the idea at NMU. And, you know, I think there's, as somebody mentioned, there, there definitely a possibility to connect the honor society students with the, with this idea, if the city, you know, in partnership with the city. So it's just an example to throw out there, but there's a lot of things like Eric's idea that could be, you know, brought up and possibly implemented. But I think the fact, the fact that, you know, we've made so little progress on this, it makes it even more relevant to keep putting it in front of the commission because I I kind of believe myself that there's more that can be done that doesn't require a lot of money that, that could really make a big difference. It it's part of, it's a matter of, you know, perspective and doing things, maybe doing things a little different. And it's not necessarily that the one side street parking thing is is feasible or, you know, but there's other things that, you know, if if you put enough attention on them, maybe that we can figure out a way to do better. And you know, it's a serious issue with winter isolation here and, you know, people that are, don't have the mobility kind of end up getting trapped sometimes in their house.
You know. Could, could we, could that, could that year one be changed just a little bit? So people don't just see dollar signs with like Snow Summit? And then, you know, maybe put in a couple of those, you know, a couple of those other ideas that maybe, you know, potentially lower to explore, you know, other, other plans, you know, adopt a sidewalk, policy, street parking. And then Snow Summit could still be in there, but maybe the emphasis gets taken off it so they don't necessarily see dollar signs associated with it.
Okay.
I I I guess that would be my only, my only comment, you know, there. Otherwise, I feel, I feel fairly, I feel good with, you know, this, this particular issue. And I don't know if anybody has any other final comments, but I'd like to move on to the next, the next issue, if that's all right. Okay.
I've got to ask you guys. What are you seeing on your screen? Are you seeing that Word document?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, I'm really not a Zoom aficionado, and I don't know what hap, when I went to that screen share and tried to go back to a normal view, and I don't see it. So I don't know what I'm not doing right on my end, but all I'm seeing is the grid with you guys in it, and I'm not seeing.
Do you have a second monitor that's not on?
No, I'm, I'm at a laptop.
Yes, I can, we can see, we can see.
Things really weird. I can see your cursor moving around.
Yeah. Anyway, so I don't.
Yeah.
I'll bring up this next issue if you can see it.
Yeah, we can see it just fine.
That's great. So.
So I I think, I think this issue with public transportation, I think you've laid it out fairly, fairly well for us. And there has been some action, you know, from, from the, the there, there's a separate committee that was looking at this, or at least some discussions you, you said previously with Taylor, Taylor Clip and Company about, you know, with Mark Tran, is that the case?
Well, I can tell you that the the city has four appointees to Mark Tran's board of directors and that I I can't remember how many are on that board. It's 12 or something like that. And the other communities, Ishbaming, Nagani Townships, I think, appoint people as well. But the, the board that, according to Taylor, the board they have now is, is a lot more engaged than maybe it was two or three years ago. When Taylor and I went and did a presentation to their board when he was the chair of the planning commission. And we talked about this potential route that had been suggested in the mobility study that was completed in 2013. I guess moving forward, it, yeah, this, the way I wrote this is very concise, but I don't really think it needs a lot more because basically what we need to do is get people around a table as identified here and just get down to what we need to do next. Do, can, can the city apply for grants through MDOT to the Federal Transit Administration? Does Mark Tran have to initiate that? I don't know. City commissioners don't know. Taylor probably doesn't know, so we need to get the people in the room that know and takes to to have that exchange of information and, you know, look at how we move forward. It's really very simple, you know.
I have no other comments on this. I think it, I I think it's it's reasonable. A question to you, Dave, has, has there ever been a city, city route? And I assume.
Yeah.
Has there been a city route?
Yes, there actually has been. It's a good question. And, you know, one of the other topics we're dealing with here in North Lake Shore Boulevard, there was an attempt to do a summer route along Lake Shore Boulevard in the past. I don't think it lasted very long. I don't think it had a lot of ridership. But they tried to do basically like a summer beach route. And that would, again, that would be a good thing to, if we're gonna be able to put together, you know, people to work on this soon, you know, to kind of document that. Because I don't remember the details, but and I don't know if maybe Eric might remember, somebody who was living in town 15 or 20 years ago might remember this, but apparently it lasted for a year or two, but no more than a couple of years from my understanding. Mark Tran and the city tried to, it wasn't really my understanding. I don't know how much the city had to do with it, but it it would be good to have more information. But because that's one of the things that occurs to me that would be, hopefully, an option in the future is to try something where, you know, there is a Lake Shore Boulevard route again. You've got, you know, in the summer, you've got a lot of people in that corridor. You've got the Lakeview Arena there with the Y now, that wasn't there before. And, you know, who knows what's coming up, you know, up through that corridor in the future. But it's, it's certainly going to remain a busy corridor in the summer. And there's, there's definitely some places that would make good transit stops along, along the corridor that aren't really being used now.
Michael.
Oh, go ahead, Wayne. Yeah, sorry. You don't have any video, so we can't see it.
In the early 50s, we had public transportation that ran up and down Prescott Isle to downtown. I don't know where it went in South Marquette, because I lived in North Marquette. Then Ted Brom started a bus service in Marquette. I think that was in the 60s, maybe early 70s. That didn't work because you need ridership to make something work. And if you lay on Mark Tran, they're half empty all the time. My own personal feelings are you could have a free taxi service for a lot less money than you can have Mark Tran or buses running and, but there were buses. And I don't know why they quit in the 50s there. You've got to remember in the 50s, mothers usually didn't drive. You gotta remember in the 50s, mothers usually didn't drive, very few cars were on the road. So I, I don't know. I mean, people are used to, I guess what you can look at is in a few years, you'll have to send all your cars to China so they can send it back in some form to you. Because they're not going to be able to afford an electric vehicle and so, I mean, things are changing. I, I don't think public transportation is gonna work or pay off. People don't let their kids walk to school because they're afraid something will happen to them. They sure as hell aren't gonna let them jump on a bus and take a ride out to the island. Not into these worlds. Just my thought.
Hey, let's bring back the trolley car that used to run in the 1800s, late 1800s in downtown Marquette. What do you think?
Yeah, they did. They had street cars. I mean, you got the tracks for just taking out not that long ago.
Went to Prescott Isle.
Yeah, different time though. People let their kids go outside. Kids went outside. Today, most parents are not gonna let their kid jump onto a bus. You can't let your kid in the front yard and go shoot, shoot somebody just to pick it up and send it to the cops or somebody. I mean, we get rid of cell phones, maybe we'll have bus ridership. I don't know.
Commissioner Milfell.
I like Wayne's idea about getting rid of cell phones and supporting our public transit again. Um, I, I think Wayne does raise, raises a good point though, and, and I don't want to dilute the effort that's gone into putting this really focused, really, you know, specific program, um, proposal about public transportation, but, you know, in the winter cities, there was the language about looking at the holistic picture, you know, and so I wonder if, um, and again, I'm happy with this, if, if this is really what we want to be really focused on public transportation, I totally would support this, but I wonder if there's not another need for looking at, um, our transportation systems more holistically and thinking not just of public transportation, but EVs. I mean, who knows what if five, 10 years might, I don't know, Eric or somebody who knows cars better than I do might know what the possibilities are. It seems like that's gonna be a thing. Um, is our city at all prepared for that? Electric vehicles and, you know, tying it to other modes of transportation with the bike ability and everything? I just wonder if, is that, if we open it up too much, is that gonna water it down and not get us anywhere? Or would it be useful to think about transportation more holistically, I guess?
I mean, I think, I think without a doubt, I mean, EVs are coming, uh, you know, at, at some point in time. Uh, and I mean, I shouldn't say you can say it at some point in time, there EVs are, you know, there, there's more, there, there's been a greater number of EVs that you see around town. You know, as, as of late, I know DDA has taken on, you know, some charging, uh, some charging efforts and I think we'll end up seeing more and more charging efforts that are, that are coming into being. I know there's grants out there right now, you know, for fast chargers, uh, and so on and so forth, uh, you know, that, that are there that, um, you know, again, you know, some, I think some of the EV infrastructure, so unless, you know, the city is looking at like housing it on their, on, you know, on their, on their land, on their private, on their property, uh, you know, we'll see it more EV charging and whatnot come up at, um, you know, destinations, places of interest, uh, you know, and so on and so forth, uh, you know, as we come. So I, I think, um, I think it's coming, uh, but, you know, I don't know, you know, at what, at what pace and, you know, that, that's coming. So I think that would be a whole separate, a whole separate piece, you know, you know, if the city wants to, you know, to consider putting out our, you know, an RFP request, you know, for, you know, uh, to host, you know, EV charging, you know, what kind of structures and so on. That's, you know, that's set, set up, you know, beyond what they've, what they've done already. So I, I think that's important, uh, whether or not that should be part of a larger, larger transportation plan, you know, for the city. I guess I'd have to look back at the, you know, what the, the strategic plan is and what the, what we say about transportation and EVs in there to, you know, get back into this. But I do think it's important to think about, um, but I don't know about putting it into this particular section right now. Aaron.
I just had a general question about the EV chargers that are, are already in market. Do we know how often they get used?
The DDA has some data on that.
And because they're the only ones that may get used more often, recently I was, uh, I, just as an aside, I was talking to some folks, uh, we're looking at EV charging for some other projects, you know, we're working on and, you know, they said conservatively, conservatively plan on, depending on where you're looking, conservatively plan currently for one charge per week, uh, you know, use, usage. So it's still relatively low right now, uh, but I think, you know, we'll see explosive growth here in the next five years personally.
So the reason I'm, I'm getting frustrated is because we're, we're going back in between strategic planning and long range planning here. We, we have a community master plan with a transportation section that's 25 or 30 pages that deals with all kinds of things. And, um, you know, when we update the master plan here in the next couple of years, probably start by the end of next year, doing an update to it. We can bring up those issues of, look at the EV vehicle issues and automation and that kind of thing. But this is, what we're talking about here is strategic planning. We're talking about issues that can be implemented in the near term. So I think we need to keep our focus there. So maybe it takes so long to do some of these things, but by the time we do them, they're outdated. I mean, that is not a new
That's kind of my point. It seems like.
Government, but this isn't necessarily outdated and we're not, we don't know what the outcome of the public transportation discussion is gonna be. And I, it's not necessarily gonna be that we're talking about a bus just like every other bus Mark Tran uses. Maybe we're talking about what makes more sense is a van. Maybe it makes more sense that we, we have a private public partnerships. Maybe there's, maybe there's gonna be possibility to fund a couple of vans that, and, you know, the whole concept of, you know, we have to have so many people on a bus all the time, doesn't make any more sense than you have to have so many people on the road at a given time to make it make sense. I don't see anybody driving by, uh, outside. I'm looking out on Wright Street. I haven't seen anybody drive by for a minute. I guess we should get rid of that road, you know? We've been talking about a bus, I think, or, or a van or something like that to, to move people around town to help with mobility issues, especially in the winter, uh, and, uh, that's, that's the issue before you.
I like thi- this, um, this page and I think we could go for this page and see what happens.
Commissioner Dunn.
Uh, just one quick comment on this one, and that is, if it was up to me, uh, I would try and include some of the major stakeholders in that, even the very first work session and, and try and bring in someone from NMU and try and bring in someone from the hospital. Um, a lot of times some really good partnerships can be formed when you've, you've got people there right at the, the ground floor to, to help, you know, with the buy-in.
Yep. I, I think, I think this is fine moving forward and, you know, I, I do think, uh, I think Sarah's point to me about EVs and transportation is, is important as well. But I do think that we can have that further considered within, within, uh, future conversations.
Okay, thank you. Uh, move on to the next issue then, I guess, if we're done with this one. So the Lake Shore Boulevard study. I don't have a lot to say, except I think that the NMU Coastlines and People project probably has helped, will help maybe move this along a bit, at least. Our city commissioners are probably a little more aware, at least of some of the issues that the planning commission's thinking about with this kind of a study uh, because of that project.
Yeah, I, I think this is one that, I think this is one that, you know, we have been in support of in the past. Uh, we're a year out now from the land development code. I don't know if we need to update that or just reflect, reflect that, because, you know, I do, I do see that we say, oh, I guess that's out of the transportation section. You know, that we have, we have completed that, uh, and this would be the next step to move forward. But this is to seek funding. This is to seek funding for it. Yeah. So does, does it commit like, and I guess the question to that is that, does there need to be something formed or is that essentially task, that would be a task to staff to look for additional funding, you know, because some of, some of the others are work with Mark Tran, work with, you know, establish an ad hoc committee. Uh, so I guess question like who, is this a staff project or would this be a committee project to look at something?
That's a good question, uh, and, and I'm not sure exactly how to answer it. Just keeping in mind expectations. I don't want to set any, uh, expectations, of course, that aren't realistic. I would hope that if this is something that's adopted, that the staff could potentially move forward with, um, at least seeking funding, the, the, the thing that I think we need to work out is whether or not we, we could still work with NMU on, on this project. I don't know if that's still gonna be something that's gonna be an option from, you know, I, from their perspective.
Commissioner Milf- Milfell.
Yeah, I just, uh, I put the project website up in the chat there. Also the final report from our series of workshops that we hosted, um, last year, there were three workshops for those of you might not be familiar. Um, several of you participated and we were just kind of bringing experts from, um, from Northern, from Michigan Tech, from, uh, Michigan State, policy and planning experts, along with climate scientists and really looking at how do we plan for climate change for our coastline? And so I put that up there. I last, I remember being told explicitly when we started that process that, um, they didn't want us specifically me to be working on, um, the corridor project and that this, this thing that was outlined in the community master plan was more of a transportation study, right? So I'm not sure. Um, I guess I'm unclear, like now they, do they want Northern's help? Because my understanding was that it was like too politically messy to get Northern involved with, um, studies like this. So we went ahead and did our own thing. So I'm not sure exactly like how, you know, what the current thought is on if they would want to work with Northern or if this was gonna be, as I thought it was more of like a transportation study along, um, the corridor. Do you know, Dave? Have there been more internal conversations that you're able to talk about?
And I, I didn't ha- have that understanding myself that Northern, you know, that I thought the Coastlines and People project was a project all on its own that,
Yeah.
that was, you know, initiated that, I mean, this could, you know, tie in somewhat to that project, but it's a lot more specific to development and transportation and in a small corridor there, um, where that, that Coastlines and People looks at the regional coastline.
Right.
And I, what I thought was, uh, maybe, um, an option moving forward was what, uh, Professor Thompson had offered at one point was to potentially help coordinate or be the lead for public outreach for this kind of a project.
Mm-hmm.
And
Yeah.
I can't answer whether or not it's, you know, i- if it's gonna be possible to do that from, you know, uh, political or other viewpoints of, or elected or appointed officials here in the city. That's
Yeah, I think the resistance was, um, well, we don't need to get into it here, but
Yeah.
The city mission has changed, so.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I'm kind of, that's what I kind of meant by, we're gonna have to work out whether or not that's possible. Or, you know, and I don't know that that's still gonna be something that Professor Thompson could hold out. I don't know her schedule, her, her workload would let her, you know, schedule that as something she could program. But, you know, it, it's, I, to me, it's a great opportunity to potentially collaborate on a project together. Um, and it's sort of a no-brainer if it was an op- uh, opportunity that was available. But that's not my decision.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, she would be great. She's great at bringing that collaborative outreach piece together.
Yeah, and that's where we really need to start is, um, gathering public input. So.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing that I would add, add to that would, would be to essentially staff coordinate with potential, if adopted, staff would coordinate with potential, you know, so it's essentially just as, and it's clear who the assignee is when it were to move forward.
Michael.
Wayne.
Just one question. There's a, a paragraph in there I don't understand. It says, once the land-based code is finished or the land development code project, I thought we did that.
Uh, we did. I think that, that is just taking it out of the 2018 update. That's the, the word for word out of the 2018 update to the community master plan. So that's just a complete section on that. So that's why it talks about the, once it's completed. So it has been completed and that's, that was my initial confusion as well.
Yeah, that's just put in there for context.
So I think, I, I think that, tho- those are my comments. I think this is, this is something we've talked about in the past, and I think it's, uh, certainly something that it's reasonable to, uh, continue seeking.
Okay. Well, I don't have any more, uh, to add. I guess I would do some minor revisions to this as noted and report back to the, to you all with the final versions of them. And that's pretty much it. I, I hope you all did get a chance to look at that winter, uh, some of the winter cities or the training on winter design and I thought it was really good.
I thought it was great too. A lot of ideas that can be done on a shoestring budget.
All right. Well, that brings us to the commission, commission and staff comments. So commissioner, I'll start with you, Commissioner Dunn.
Nope. I guess I just said it. I thought that, uh, Winter Cities presentation was great. All of them.
Commissioner Prell.
Yeah, my only comment is we're talking about the roads and, uh, like 3% of them getting done. And if they really looked at that, they would find that, I don't know how many years ago, when they set up what they're doing now, um, they could really maintain the roads if they used their budget right, but they set it up and once, it's like, uh, you know, your grandfather used to cut a tree down with an axe. uh, you know, your grandfather used to cut a tree down with an axe, but we don't cut it down with axes anymore. And sometimes, once in a while, we should look at things saying, hey, because uh, whatever the year was, we started this thing. We don't have to continue it. We can change it. It seems like they just don't change anything. You know, this is what we do. Next guy, well, this is what we do. I think we need to look at some of that. That's it.
Thanks, Wayne. Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Brooks, are you there?
No comment.
Oh, no comment. All right. Thanks. Uh, Commissioner.
Yeah, no comment.
Commissioner Middlefield.
On my turn. Um, again, congrats, uh, Michael, organizing another really cool, uh, UP Energy conference. I guess that was last, was that last week? I don't remember, um, but it was good hearing about some cool examples of, uh, local efforts to shift to green energy. And, uh, yeah, and if you haven't got a chance to check out that Coastline and People report that, um, I just put that in the chat. So if you're interested, there's lots of cool photos of Marquette, um, and kind of thinking about coastal development along the entire South Shore market or of Lake Superior. So, um, if you're feeling like you can't, uh, if you're having a hard time falling asleep, then go ahead and check out that report. Um, I think that's it.
Uh, and, uh, I think, I, I, you know, I, I think just to comment on, just to comment, you know, for me, I think there's a lot of, a lot of important things that we talked about tonight, and I hope that I don't think this will be the, the last night we talk about it. And I think there is, there's certainly uh, ways that we can engage with the city commission, you know, outside of this, you know, this kind of limited, limited, um, strategic planning process with our, with our three, uh, you know, initiative, initiatives here. And, uh, you know, I think it's gonna certainly take action, you know, on, uh, on, you know, energy, climate, uh, you know, from the, from the commission to, you know, move, move forward and to, you know, adopt into a variety of things. So I, I hope we, we continue to kind of think about things in those, with it, within those lenses. Uh, and that, uh, you know, we continue that discussion, uh, with the city commission at, at some point, whether in a letter or, you know, bringing it up, but, you know, bringing it up at future joint meetings, you know, that it is, that is of importance. So that's, that's, uh, it for me. Dave, I don't know if you have anything.
I guess I just noticed that it looks like Aaron dropped off.
Oh yes, I, I saw that he dropped off. I should have said something. So yeah, Aaron, Aaron had to, had to go. Uh, he's, he said that, uh, he wouldn't be able to, he may not be returning here. So since we're closing up, I think we won't expect him back.
I'm wondering, um, yeah, I, I congratulations, Michael, on your UP Clean Energy Conference again. Um, is there, uh, an option for the public to access any of that?
Yeah, th- there is. And I, I mean, I, I, we put out, we put out the link, you know, with, you know, I think it was in the Mining Journal and, uh, Upper Michigan News source. And so they're all open, open to the public. And so if folks can, that's primarily how we had folks kind of sign up and we had, we had reasonable turnout for an online, an open online conference. I think we ended up having 110 people on, uh, it, which I think is pretty good. I mean, the, the previous one, which was a little bit, you know, wider ranging, you know, we, we had, uh, you know, over the 200 folks mark, people mark, but I think, you know, this had some good attended attendance and, uh, interaction.
Yeah, great. I'll be looking for that. I'd like to see. I haven't had a chance to see any.
I just forwarded you the recording, Dave.
Oh, great. Thank you.
It might be awkward. I haven't listened to it.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. If there's, if there's other, nothing else, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Hey, good night.
Thank you.